I'd like to call the Wednesday, August 26th Planning Commission Work Session to Order. Heather, if you call the role.
Mr. Granger. Mr. Boswell.
Here.
Mr. Clea.
Here.
Ms. Macbeth.
Here.
Mr. Edwards.
Here.
Mr. Schaller.
Here.
Mr. Tarly.
Down here.
Thanks, John. Okay, so our first order of business is a presentation by WADA with the Executive Director, Zach Troop. Come forward.
Well, thank you for having me here. I know you're in the midst of some planning for the future, and we appreciate being allowed to speak and sort of introduce ourselves to you. I hope this is the one of many. I wouldn't say it's the first because I'm pretty sure, you know, we've talked and luckily the rezoning and everything we did, but certainly one of many opportunities to interact with you about how we can fit into the future of the city and how it gets around. But with that, many of you may know, but I want to just kind of give you a presentation we give to some groups, just give you a little history about us in case you maybe don't know as much as you see our buses around. Once you hear of WADA, you start seeing the buses everywhere, which is great. A lot of people say, what is WADA? And then you're like, man, now I see your buses everywhere. So, you know, we're proud of that. Real quickly, Williamsburg Area Transit Authority started. We celebrated our 40th anniversary just a couple of years ago. It actually started at James City County Transit. It was sort of a community development thing back in that day. It evolved to become more of the area thing, not just James City County. Williamsburg Area Transport changed its name. Partners that came in were York County, City of Williamsburg, and the College of William and Mary at that time. All of them still remain today, all those partners from then, which is great. So, in 2006, it became something the state and the localities worked together, thought, you know, creating an authority would really be a way to enhance the service, enhance the ability to leverage some of the funding out there available for public transportation. So, that's when the effort began, and the Colonial Williamsburg Foundation came on because there was recognition that tourism and how important transportation was, is to that sector and continues to be. And so, we could take advantage of some of that as well to help that sector. So, once all the background work was done, the authority really began to function in 2008 as the authority. We are a political subdivision, so, you know, we are a public body, much like the city is, on, you know, sort of the same legal standing. William and Mary is not a member right now, and DRPT, that stands for Division of Rail and Public Transportation, is Department of VDOT that works very closely with us on funding and regulatory issues. Here's something, I'll come back to this in a minute, but this just shows you the extent you may have seen better behind you perhaps, just the extent of our system. You can see we cover a large geographic area. The city being there in the middle, so you can see, we have a little inset with the city kind of centered around the train station and some of the shopping centers there. We do reach down to Surrey County right now and far up into Norwich and Tohono, kind of in the western part, so. I can come back to that in a minute. We like to show this sometimes, just show you how, sort of, over those 40-plus years, how it evolved. Some of this may not show up great, but you can see, we kind of spread out, you know, there were these routes, some of those routes back in the day may have been two hours, you know, it was something where the people just needed to get to work, and then they went home later on, but, you know, people just took a break during the day, they just needed the transportation to and from work. Then some things kind of retracted, and then we've kind of gone back out. And, of course, what you just saw was our current route network, so this sort of shows you how that it's been there the last 40 years or so. That has changed, sort of, again, focused around sort of the urban core as well, always hitting that. To give you some insight into how we work with the state and federal government, I think we talked when we received, when we were talking about the facility we're getting ready to build, how we do leverage a good bit of federal funding. WADA is actually classified as a small urban system. We have over 50,000 people, but less than 200,000 in the area. What it is, is the Census Bureau has created an urbanized area for the Williamsburg area, that over 50,000. And so, we receive some funding to provide service, you know, around that urbanized area from a formula. So, it's population-based, so the growth of this area helps us to continue to get, you know, a little more funding over the years for public transportation. Out of these, federal is normally about 33% of our revenues, operating for a year. The state, about 25, local 25, and Fairbox right now, and then some other contractual, Fairbox is about 11% or so, anywhere from 10% to 11% a year normally. And then we also just have some contracted services to bring in revenue with the college. So, you know, we do have a myriad of sources, being something that the federal government had an interest in, in helping states and localities provide, so that's sort of where that relationship, where that relationship came about. For our fixed routes, actually, I apologize, this slide, I need to update it because we've actually changed, you may have seen some of the things I sent before, we've actually changed these numbers now because frankly, we're running out of color. You know, people, you know, being able to tell, you know, pink from red sometimes for people may not be the easiest thing to do. So, we actually did have an effort back when I actually first got it, about three or so years ago, to change it to numbers. So, you know, gray is one of our busier routes, that's the one that goes down to Newport News, he's all, most of them meet at the train station down there, which we're very proud of that multimodal connection, and with that, you know, I think you all and we see that just becoming more and more valuable over the years, the multimodal nature of that connection down there. Blue runs out to the west, red runs around out to Monticello Avenue, tan and orange actually go over to York County around the Mary Mac area. What's called green there actually is William and Mary, when that really just runs seasonally for when the college is in. And then purple one and two are kind of out in that northern James City County, York County area, and out around Lightfoot and that area. And then, of course, the trolley, which I think you all, you know, have shown some interest in, that's one of our routes. And then Jamestown is a new one, actually. We get some funding to do routes sort of on a demonstration, temporary basis sometimes for a couple of years. That one just came about recently where that became a more permanent route after going through that. And the same thing is with, we reached down to Lackey in York County recently with a route that we've had for the last three years. That's how sometimes we get to where we test it out and see if the area wants to keep it, see if stakeholders are interested, and so that's sometimes how we get a new route. So, I look forward to talking to y'all about that more as we go forward. Some of just the things we've worked on recently, meaning the last year or two, real-time information, which I'll talk about in a minute, that's, you know, so important when you can see, okay, I want to catch the bus, where is it right now? So, that's not always the easiest thing to do, especially to be accurate, but I'll show you in a second sort of how we've improved that lately. I was just talking about the Lightfoot area, we actually are looking at property now, trying to build a transfer facility that is kind of Walmart, Lightfoot that's growing in that area, so we do see a lot of activity picking up there, you know, with retail activity, service work, things of that nature, some more residences and all that. The administration maintenance facility, which I was able to wait until this slide, that's something that you all were generous enough to provide us a rezoning on, and actually we just really, I think, cleared one of the last hurdles today, should be the last hurdle, but I'm still kind of not counting my chickens, to really be able to finally close on that property and get that project going for us in the area. So, thanks again for all of your help on that, but that's going to be something, a major project for the next two or three years that we undertake that'll help us to operate more effectively. We had a, you know, we're also working on just our data and ability to plan and come and talk to you all, you know, being able to show you more in real time, if we make this change to a route, what it'll do and things like that, so we've acquired some software for that. And then we're always working on, you know, stop improvements to make sure that our stops are, you know, if we need a shelter somewhere, solar lighting, things like that. We put a solar light down at Busch Gardens recently because it was, you know, a safety issue that someone had asked about, so, and when those come up, we always try to do what we can to either plan ahead or make sure we're responsive to that. You see payment options there, that's another thing, is you'd hope it would be easier to do, but all the coordination you have to make, you know, certainly paper media, dollar bills, things like that, not the best for perhaps attracting especially your choice riders and your younger riders, so we're certainly working on, you know, some studies and trying to make sure we can find something that we can implement that'll work seamlessly to allow people to either pay electronically, make some kind of account, something like that. So, you see a lot of that out there, hard to know exactly what it'll look like at that point, but that is something that, you know, we just have to do, you know, you have to have that ability nowadays because those other forms are just not going to be that way going forward. And we're always working on the fleet to make sure we're safe and, you know, not having outsized maintenance cost, anything like that. So, this is the real-time information. So, we had a system that we recently have gone away from because it had a lot of more labor intensive than we really needed. So, as you know, technology can improve so drastically over just a couple of years, and so we've turned to this thing called the Transit App that anybody can download, and it's free, and so this is sort of what the interface would look like, if y'all can see that. So, we do have that set up for WADA now. I think that's, I can say that definitively, right? Yes. And again, this is so important that this stuff be right on so that people can turn to it and trust it, and, you know, that's sometimes not always the case, so we're very happy that we've really drilled down on that and, you know, gotten to where people can get these tools, they're free. You know, you do need a smartphone, I think a lot of our choice riders, students, things like that, you know, are going to have that ability. Perhaps everybody that's our customer may not have a smartphone, we certainly still work with them on paper schedules and, you know, have dispatch and everything else, so we certainly aren't trying to leave anybody behind. But this is one, and then this is simply, we have the ability, this is just like a Google Maps here, so you could just get out on the, and find Williamsburg, and so you see there's a little route there with timing. So, we recently, you know, were able to set up to where we can just get on platforms like Google Maps, Bing Maps, Apple Maps, so, you know, we feel like that was great. We were on those platforms where it doesn't take necessarily a special thing, a Transit App maybe about the only thing, download a Transit App, you can take it anywhere, you know, and you can be in New York, you can be in, I guess, any big city, and now you can be in Williamsburg, Virginia as well and use it, you can travel to, you know, wherever else you're going, if they have a transit system, if they're on it, you can use that app, so it's not like you're getting it just for Williamsburg. So, you know, again, this was always, this was a focus of our board directors also to make sure that, you know, people were able to get accurate information for us. So, you know, if you use these tools, if you ever see anything that needs anything, please get in touch with us, we certainly do our QA, but, you know, sometimes they can be confusing, or, you know, so let us know. You know, looking ahead, you know, our opportunities that we have, we certainly value our partnerships, we've just received a tremendous amount of support from the city and York County and James City County, plus, you know, our partners at the state and federal government, so we feel like we've got a tremendous amount of support, so we want to honor that and continue to grow and be part of our, you know, part of the transportation infrastructure here around the Williamsburg area. As I said, the administration facility, transfer facility, fleet, capital, you know, capital expenditures are a big part of what we do too. We have, you know, millions, millions upon millions of buses running at any one time around the area, so that's something that always needs to be replenished. So, innovative planning and service types, this is something, I sent you the section from our most recent transit development plan that was done about in 2016, that was just to give you a flavor of, that's something, that's a document that we do, and it's changing a little bit to where we're now required to do something called a transit strategic plan because we are an urban-type system, and so the Department of Rail and Public Transportation is requiring something a little different. But you see in our, the plan you had that we're really currently operating on, there wasn't a whole lot of focus on, you know, a new type of service or something, there are some things called, you know, micro-transit, that's, if you're around me for very long, you figure out, I don't like Uber, that's just kind of a personal choice, I'm not an Uber fan, I just find the whole concept sort of just not my thing, but, you know, it's sort of Uber-like, it's an on-demand type of service where if we can find an area that maybe doesn't need a bus running by every hour, every 30 minutes, but it may have some type of mass of people that need something, that could be something where it's a little different service type, but, you know, certainly technology-based. So, you know, this next transit strategic plan, we certainly are going to be turning to those types of changes in the marketplace and how the disruption is being caused by things like Uber and other things on public transportation to take that into account. You know, we've talked to the historic Triumph Collaborative about more frequent service, that's certainly something else we want to, you know, we want to focus on. We understand that, you know, perhaps increasing ridership, you know, maybe that we need to have buses going by points more frequently, so we certainly, you know, want to be studying that as well and make that part of our focus. But that plays into the challenges some, you know, really, we could have a fantastic system, and I think we do, but staffing, you have to be able to get these qualified people that are going to be carrying, you know, people down the road, and you don't want just anybody doing that. So, staffing in these types of positions has been a challenge, and I think even with this current, you know, kind of the unemployment where it is now, it's still a challenge sometimes to find qualified people. So, that also plays into the ridership, again, we need to sort of be, what type of service do we need that's going to attract people and up the interest in our service so that we can be that infrastructure piece? And, I mean, funding stream is just simply about, we're part of the political process, you know, it's federal government, state government funding, so, but they've been great partners, and so, but we can't ever take our eye off the ball when it comes to that. So, I usually, you know, finish with this slide, you know, you can kind of see there, it's kind of self-explanatory, you can, you know, if you want six people going down the road, each of them has their own vehicle, that's what you get, even if you got Uber or something, 60 people trying to get down the road, you know, you get the same thing. You know, but if you can use public transportation, you know, you can't build roads, I think, to get out of everything, so certainly, you know, to leave you with something, we, you know, we want to be our segment of, and make sure we're performing our duty as a segment of the transportation infrastructure. Again, you have, you know, we're not, I'll tell you, we're not replacing the automobile, you know, Europe and China and all them have fantastic public transportation, are very dense places, they have plenty of cars, I think probably all of you have been there, I've been, like, not like you're going to take all the cars off the road, that's not really, that's not a realistic goal, but certainly, you know, we want to play our role as part of that infrastructure of the transportation choices, you know, in the Williamsburg area. So, with that, any questions or comments or anything? Again, this was just sort of an overview, we look forward to working with you all some more as you move forward on the comp plan and your transportation planning, and thank you for having us here.
I actually did have a question. So, I really like the trolley, I live downtown, I really like that, that's great, but when I'm in, like, Washington DC, which until recently, someplace I'd be once or twice a month on business, in the metro, on metro buses, on the WMATB buses and all that, so they've changed since the COVID that you have to enter and exit off of the, in the back door, and, you know, they have pay, you know, pads, you know, you can tap your card and all that kind of stuff. It seems, you know, the last time I've been on trolleys or local buses, I mean, you have to pay money, which is sort of germy for most people nowadays, so are there any opportunities, given the current situation, for some of these technologies to maybe implement a fare system that would not necessarily be a burden on your budget, but that there's new money on the table to create, you know, payment options, fare prices, all those kinds of things?
Yeah, absolutely, I think it's just, you know, we've been working on that anyway, and unfortunately, COVID kind of caused a little more of a...
A little tsunami.
Yeah, absolutely, just, yeah, these, I mean, because for us, it's really a time saver too, you know, having to fumble with money and putting it in the fare box is also another thing, so, yeah, we're trying to, we are working with a consultant to help move that ahead as quickly as we can, I don't think that, you know, right now, it's not really a question of budget, it's just trying to get a budget, it's more just making sure we have the, you know, to where it'll be a system that we can have, that we can implement that won't be, you know, too large or anything, so I think, absolutely, you know, it's not a question of if, but when we can get that going, and it is, we actually have some funding for it already, it's just making sure we get it to where we've got the right plan in place to implement it effectively, but, yeah, so, yeah, you're talking about just having mobile payment, not having to touch?
Yeah, I mean, like, up in DC, like, they're not having people come by the driver, it's all back door, in and out, not in and out, you know, using both doors to just to try to protect people, which is the, sort of the other thing, is like, how have you all been doing with your riding around in confined little spaces?
Yeah.
With people and people coming and going and...
Yeah, we've been okay, I mean, we're doing the same thing, we're boarding by the rear door, we've had to go fare-free as a practical matter because of that, and so, you know, thankfully, you know, the federal government has provided some relief for transit agencies because of that, because we're certainly not the only one, that's a widespread activity right now. Yeah, we've, you know, I will say, we've always done, been very good at cleaning and sanitizing our buses, we just happen to have a very conscientious bit of, you know, I don't know if we're any better than anybody else, all I can say is, I'm proud of the way that we do it, and we keep our buses clean, and our operators are very conscientious about that, but, yeah, we've done well, we have, you know, people have been very respectful, riders have been distancing, sometimes you get a little incident, but thankfully, we've been able to handle those in a good manner, but, you know, we're doing exactly what you described, we're going through the back door, and, you know, as you said, where this goes from here is certainly something like a contactless payment system is a necessity, necessity moving forward, so I appreciate that, you know, that realization.
And then, I guess, a final question or query, and maybe this is just how I read some of the documents that you gave us, is that you mentioned a couple of times our linkage to the Hampton Roads Transit, and that they are given their density reasonably at a higher urban level for federal funding for transportation and all those other kinds of things, but it seemed like there was maybe a unstated, like, maybe there's a way that city organizations can help you advocate for something that would allow us to connect better to HRT and things like that?
Yeah, the state has really been pushing the regional, some regional transit too, so, you know, it's certainly an idea whose time has, and it's not to say we've never done it, I mean, certainly that connection down there, but like you say, that, you know, people live up here, a lot of people work there, and so, any additional connections we can get are going to be that much, that much better, and, you know, the article recently in the WI Daily as well, so, so, yeah, that's just, again, a question of what's going to be the best, and, you know, for them and the funding they get, for the funding we get to serve this area and going down there, so...
And also for us, I mean, with regard to economic development and the cost of our housing, there's a lot of, you know, the cross pollination is really more workers coming from lower peninsula up to here.
Absolutely, absolutely, yes.
So, it's actually providing that catchment-based service to get to where they potentially need to work.
Absolutely, so, yeah, it's more we can, and again, we talk about frequency and things like that, could probably be just that much more vital, but, yeah, you know, again, it comes down to these, just planning, using technology, potentially, you know, even advances in what are fuel technology, vehicles, things like that, so just, but, yeah, the state has taken a much, a great interest in sort of regional transit and, you know, the local transportation planning organization has, so we've started to have a work group with, you know, HRT, who serves both the peninsula as well as the south side, you know, on the other side of the tunnel, so, so, yeah, I think we'll see some great advances in that again, you know, sometimes change comes slower than we'd like, but, you know, certainly the groundwork is being set and the, you know, desire is there, I can say that with all certainty.
Thank you. So, now that I took the floor forever, it seems like, sorry, and other comments, questions?
Question for you about the trolley, there's kind of a, as Elaine mentioned, it's a cool thing, and it's not a bus, I mean, it is a bus, but it's not a bus.
Right.
And there's kind of, there's always this perception about a, you know, sort of a stigma in a way, particularly with tourists and college students and that sort of thing, and I know the trolley serves the college primarily, but has there been any study whether people would be more likely to ride a trolley if it was, if we had a trolley that went where buses currently go?
I don't think we've really studied that, I think, yeah, it's, we're still just sort of on the, trying to hook up these shopping areas, the Merchant Square, High Street, and Newtown, so that's still been the focus, I think that, you know, the trolley's been running, I think it's probably been, you know, 10 years, 10 years now or more, and that was kind of the focus, so. I think some of that development needs to still come out, you know, High Street is building out some more and things like that, but, no, we haven't really re-envisioned the trolley as of yet, I mean, I think that's something we'd love to talk to you all about in terms of economic development and seeing, I mean, it is something the city's, you know, sort of been interested in, so I think re-envisioning that would certainly be something we'd love, because it actually doesn't, you know, it doesn't have the highest ridership now, so we'd love to see how it might become more of an asset to the city and to us, but, no, it's kind of been on the same, just kind of the same focus from when it was originally envisioned is all I can say, but, any ideas, we'd certainly be open to that.
Thanks.
Have you converted to compressed natural gas or diesel, or what's your main fuel?
We have not, WADA runs, ours are clean diesel, has been. Now, Colonial Williamsburg, we, they use compressed natural gas buses, there is this partnership where we actually purchased, WADA actually purchases the buses with the help of some federal funds, and CW operates them, so that's been a nice partnership, but yes, they do run, they run compressed natural gas buses, and they even did that before they were a partner with us, so they've been, they've been ahead of the curve on that, but, you know, that's a discussion we, as a board, need to have about if alternative fuels, if there's going to be a time at which we do change, you know, clean diesel, the capital cost is normally less than some of the alternatives, but, you know, if we want to make that switch, it's got to be a conscious, conscious effort to do so for the right reasons, so, discussion to have.
Okay, well, thank you, thank you for your presentation.
Thanks, again, look forward to meeting with you all again sometime soon as you work through your plan and...
Okay, so our next item is review of Chapter 7, the economy, which actually, your being here, Zach, is, I think, great with regard to the economy and the infrastructure, I mean, our transportation systems as a whole, and the bus system fits right into all of this for me.
I'll try to speak loud enough for everybody to hear me, but let me know if I need to speak up.
Okay, thank you.
So, Chapter 7 is the economy chapter. The 2013 version of this was actually drafted by the Hampton Roads Planning Commission, so we've gone back and kind of tried to update the statistics, but we've had to go to them for a few of these facts and figures that just escaped our abilities. So, the first section, really, we didn't make a whole lot of significant changes to that, it kind of summarizes where we sit on the peninsula and our neighbors, made a couple of, you know, wordsmithing changes, and to kind of dive right into things, the regional economics session, section, we went ahead and updated those numbers as far as population goes, we've actually dropped one ranking in our metropolitan statistical area, it's the Virginia Beach, Norfolk, Newport News Metropolitan Statistical Area, and we're the 37th largest region in the nation with an approximate population of 1.76 million residents, and that was as of 2019, and it's a slight increase of about 3.21% since 2010. I think it's interesting to note that since the last comp plan, the definition of the MSA as far as the area that it includes has kind of changed a little bit, includes the six counties of Gloucester, Isle of Wight, James City, Matthews, no longer includes Surrey County, Southampton County in York, and then the 10 cities of Chesapeake, Hampton, Franklin is new, Newport News, Norfolk, Vicousin, Portsmouth, Suffolk, Virginia Beach, and Williamsburg. Also new to the MSA are the counties in North Carolina of Camden, Currituck, and Gates, as well as their incorporated cities and towns. This is primarily due to the Route 17 corridor and the improvements that are taking place along there.
Is that where Southampton County is?
Yeah, Southampton County's in Virginia, there is a Southampton County in North Carolina, but that's where the connection is made.
Yeah, okay.
So, there's significant investment, I know from being in North Carolina for a while, there was significant investment being made in that corridor in the North Carolina area, and it's tying into the shipping traffic that you see coming out of Virginia, and the goal there is, I think, is to connect the ports land-wise between the Hampton Roads area and the Wilmington area, and that's just a land route to connect those two ports. That's a little aside. So, the Metropolitan Statistical Area definition has not changed any except for our kind of regional map has a little bit, the maps that were included in your plan are the maps that are provided by the US Census Bureau, and they kind of give you a full picture of everything, as well as some of the adjacent MSAs to us. And I haven't done one of these presentations in a while, so I'll ask you to stop me if you need me to stop. need me to stop.
Okay, so I do have a question.
Certainly, please do.
And this is, this is the first draft, some of these are small. So you, when your immediate comment was that most of this chapter was drafted by the Hampton Roads Planning District in our last comp plan.
Yes.
And is true for the previous comp plan and all that. But since this is updated, but hugely weighted in blue and not red, as, you know, as a professor in me, this person would be plagiarizing here. So we somehow need to annotate this in some fashion.
Okay.
That this is an update from a previous study that they did or something like that. Because, you know, at this point, it's some sort of like a 90%, their study without any attribution. So, and for me, we've been doing this with other chapters where there's been a study that we just cite at some point, or, you know, a link in the online document. But if it's so heavily weighted from that, we need to do something.
Certainly. And if we get further into it, you'll see that there are other areas that have been further updated and changes that have been made. But
Oh, golly, yeah.
Yeah, along those lines.
We got a lot of red on this one. So this is a good page. The first page, I was a little scared of.
Along those lines, and I meant to just kind of touch on this at the very beginning of the presentation, I think that this chapter is also going to include kind of a caveat at the beginning of it. 2019 statistics are what we're referencing here. And 2020 and going forward is going to be an entirely different economic animal. And I'm not sure how the commission wants to address that and how we want to kind of, you know, acknowledge that while we're drafting this, we're facing an entirely different economic outlook than may, we may see in these pages. We just don't have those numbers to look at and to analyze or to present right now. I think.
Big things from my side of the college is just that we've gone through the census without the students being here.
That's huge.
And in terms of the city residents, that's a large percentage of city residents between the dormitories and the housing.
Yes.
And how is that going to affect us as we're categorized into all these different federal funding tables and all these other kinds of things?
Yes. And along the same lines is the, is the employment data, you know, that, you know, if you look at the data, the first, I guess, first two quarters that we've seen, you know, you have this dramatic drop off, and then there's kind of not a return, but a little bit of a rise. But that, that rise is not a bounce back. And what that will look like long term, we just, we don't know. So.
The effect's going to be for years.
Yeah. And I do, I do anticipate that. And I think that we probably need to address that kind of as a caveat at the beginning of this chapter.
Great.
How we want to do that and how the commission, you know, wants to kind of wordsmith that around. We can work on the, on that language. But I think that it's important that we acknowledge that.
Excuse me, I was going to suggest that, what I was going to, a caveat at the beginning, but I think certainly some of these sections are not particularly related or not going to be, you know, impacted, you know, which, you know, which region we're in, you know, things like that.
Yeah.
But I think there needs to be, I would suggest there be language in the ones, in anything related to, you know, income and the, you know, the economy itself, that throughout, you know, some, whatever, you know, maybe some standard language in each of those sections so that people don't just pull it out and make it look like we didn't.
Well, I think just, yeah, making sure that consistently dates are given when there's a statistic, an increase, a decrease, what years does the increase or decrease reflect?
Mm-hmm.
And that's done much of the time in here, but some of the time, it's, it's a little ambiguous where it comes from.
Okay.
So you have to kind of infer that the, the data is 2010, or, you know, because that was the previous, whatever, was, is part of the previous document. So just explicit, being explicit throughout about dates is going to be key. And I would suggest an introductory paragraph that says, as of the writing of this document, the economic condition in the country and in this region is very different from the statistics that we're using to inform this planning document. Readers should be mindful of the fact that these are now historic trends, not our present, not the present condition. Because otherwise, as you say, there's going to be, people are going to get, it's going to be a historic document almost immediately, rather than a, rather than a current document. But I think you could just address that at the beginning and then be very careful about using dates wherever there's a statistic.
Okay. And I'll tie that into the language that we just talked about as far as the historic language from the previous plan as well. You know, that there are some, there are some references in here that are going to be outdated immediately, but, but there are some references in here that still stand from the previous plan. And make sure we acknowledge the fact that HRTP did, did in fact draft that chapter.
Along those same lines, the, it doesn't appear that the maps reflect the new MSA. Looks to me like Surrey is still part of that. And also note above, in the verbiage above 7.2, it says, according to the 2000 census, the vast majority of Williamsburg residents either were, that's 20 years ago.
Yeah, that is a different number. It's, that number has been updated. I can change that in the chapter. It should be the 2018 American Community Survey.
What does it say? Same?
It's the same.
I think there's, there's a number of points in here where you're just going to have to go through very carefully.
Date by date.
And make sure that, yeah. I, I sent some comments to Carolyn before the meeting.
Yes.
That picked out a few.
Yes. And we, I've gotten comments from a few of you. Those haven't been included in this chapter, just because I wouldn't have time to get you guys the updated version of it.
We didn't send them until 3 o'clock, so.
Oh, come on, heavens, it's, we're in there.
I will look into that mapping. That, like I said, those maps are the maps that the Census Bureau published. So I'll track and see if, if they have not updated their maps.
As long as we're paused, this is a relatively small thing, but I think, I think it's occurred in other chapters to city, whether it's capitalized or it's lowercase. It seems to be capitalized a little more enthusiastically in this chapter than.
Sometimes.
Yeah.
It's.
All right.
Switching in one spot.
Yeah, yeah. It like scans the whole document and starts going through.
Well, there's a few where it's still lowercase, but, but.
And on that, and on that same note, we'll, we'll mention, college has a capital C, university has a lowercase u, and it's, it's still the College of William &amp; Mary, as far as, as far as I know.
Yeah, yeah.
Not the university.
Right.
Even, even though marketing would have us believe otherwise.
I actually went on the website today because I didn't know that changed.
Yeah.
That's a hard one because.
They sent us guiding.
They sent us information, said college, the college.
Yeah. William &amp; Mary with an ampersand.
Yeah, William &amp; Mary, yeah.
Or refer to them as the university.
It's a university, but it's lowercase because it's not part of the name. Whereas city of Williamsburg is officially the name, so the capital C is, yeah.
So we try and find those, but every time.
Every time you think you've found them all, you go back and you go, I think I, where did that one come from?
But officially, it is, is it still, is it now officially not the College William &amp; Mary, but just William &amp; Mary?
It is still officially the College of William &amp; Mary.
Because of the charter.
For all time coming. But, marketing likes to use just William &amp; Mary.
I know.
Which is fine, which is for this purpose, you know. But when you say, the, you know, because you've referenced it as.
It's not the University of William &amp; Mary.
Not yet.
Not yet.
Okay.
Yeah, that's right. All right. Sorry, we've jumped around a little bit.
No, that's okay. So, this is something that Zach just mentioned, as far as the urbanized areas in, in the peninsula, Williamsburg is recognized as its own urbanized area. And that includes portions of James City County as well as York County. And then just some adjacent ones, the Virginia Beach urbanized area actually comes up the peninsula, jumps over the water as well into, into Gloucester, in the Gloucester Courthouse area. And that's primarily just due to the density of the population in those areas.
People in the water must have a problem.
So this, I think, is a page that has lots of red on it. The way the, that employment statistics were cited previously has changed. So that's why you see a ton of red on this page. They're just, you can find more accurate and more direct statistics using the American Community Survey and what the, what Virginia publishes now. So you don't have to kind of go this convoluted way that doesn't include military folks and all that kind of stuff. So we've just kind of eliminated that conversation. I think it's interesting to note that half the individuals, almost half the individuals 16 years or older in the city are employed. Of those ages 20 to 64, 65.3% are employed. So that's, that's pretty significant, even if you consider the, the number of students that we have. Go on down just a little bit. The university healthcare, healthcare and social assistance and retail trade make up a significant majority of the remaining jobs in the city. That is after accommodations and food services. That really shouldn't come as much of a surprise to folks with the growth of the hospital and things like that. And the largest employers, again, are William &amp; Mary, Colonial Williamsburg, and James City County Public Schools, as well as the city. And I think it's important to note here, in the previous plan, there was a really great map that we just no longer have access to the, to the statistics that they used. They're not published any longer. And it kind of showed the hotspots of employment in the city. So you kind of, you could follow the corridors by looking at where the employment was. We can't get those numbers anymore. They, they'll tell you how many people are employed in a sector, but they won't tell you where in that sector they're employed. You know, you can presume that, you know, most of your accommodations are going to be along, you know, Richmond Road and that kind of stuff. But you're not going to see that in a map any longer. They just don't, I know the numbers are out there, they're not publicized. I've tried four or five different routes to track them down, and the, and the state just no longer provides that information. So. Colonial Williamsburg Foundation has, has obviously made some changes in their employment since the last plan, and has also seen some changes in their, in their visitors. I think it was important to note that while it says there have been 1.1 million visitors in 2017, that does not mean that they've had 1.1 million people paying tickets.
Oh, oh.
No ticket.
Those are folks that are in the historic area. If you go to the next page, it'll talk about how many folks actually paid, or were paid general admission at the bottom of that paragraph, only about half that, 550,000 guests, I guess. They differentiate between visitors and guests. Visitors have come to the historic area and guests are folks that have paid to actually enter the, the buildings and, and take tours.
I think for the purposes of this document, because that jumped out at me when I saw the 1.1 and the 1.7 both, in the first paragraph, I wonder if the way to rephrase it, because you cover both of them, or both of them are covered at the, at the end of that paragraph.
Yes.
Since the, I won't say the more relevant number, the more precise number, certainly, is the, is the ticketed.
Certainly.
Guests. I wonder if that's the number that belongs.
On the first part.
Yeah. And then, and then you cover them both as you have done at the end of the paragraph. So that, that sentence would just be with approximately 550,000 ticketed guests in 2018. Because anybody, also anybody who's been watching the news, the local news for a number of years, will see that and say, where'd this come from?
Yeah. What's the problem?
Yeah.
Oh, and we need to remove governors in, by the way.
Right.
Yes.
But that 1.1 million number comes from the foundation.
Yes. That's a statistic that they cite.
Now, that's a fuzzy.
A lot of them are locals.
Yeah, that's what I was going to say. A lot of them are people walking their dogs and, and local people.
I don't, yeah, I don't know how they generate the estimate.
Walked in the public streets and sidewalks.
Just an estimate.
The last regime kind of didn't.
So some of us have been counted 365 times.
Yeah, I don't think it's quite that half-baked, but I think the more precise number is clearly the.
Is the ticketed guests, absolutely.
Yeah.
So in here, it's, I think it's important to note that they're the second largest employer of, in the city, even though their, their numbers have, have changed. They've reduced their, their employment by almost, almost 200 since the last plan. That, that number they give, that we have, the most recent number that we had access to was 1,411 workers. That was in 2018. They've obviously contracted out a lot of their, their, their work that they have. And so they've reduced their, their employment that way. And we don't have access to those numbers to kind of know, while they're not employed by Colonial Williamsburg, the fact that Colonial Williamsburg exists supports these other businesses that are, that are functioning as services inside that area.
Let me, let me ask you a question. The word "they" at the top of that page references, the last, since preceding that says several hotels and restaurants. CW operates several hotels and restaurants. They are, but you, the "they" references CW as a whole, not the hotels and restaurants, right?
Correct.
We might want to change that.
Clarify that.
Yeah.
It should just be "it is," because the, I think the, what it's referring to is the foundation.
The foundation, yeah.
Right.
Yeah, instead of, instead of the.
Okay. So I guess the next part, we are going to update and just call William &amp; Mary as, and we'll use the ampersand and we'll just bypass all of the confusion there.
Well, I don't think it's confusing to anyone except for the marketing department. I think everybody in the world understands what this institution is called. Sorry, I should be, I should be more restrained in a public meeting, but.
So we'll, the first part of this is just kind of a basic history of, of the college. I can call it that, I think, maybe. And how it operates within the city the size. And the, the, I guess, the biggest update here is, is the number of students that they've, they've increased. They've lost direct employment of approximately, well, in 2013, their employment was at 2,800. Now it's at 2,337 as of 2019. But that does not include, that's, those that are employed directly. That does not include any of the ancillary services that are associated with the, with this college. They haven't increased their enrollment. In 2013, you can see it was at 8,200. In 2018, it's at 8,817 undergraduate, graduate, and professional students. The population, as we just talked about, as far as the census goes, represents approximately half of Williamsburg's total population. And they form, and they form an important market segment for the retail and services in the city, as is evident by what we, what we see going on over in Midtown, I think. This, the brief salary update, I think there's another date in there that we need to update. I think that should be 2019, the median salary 2019. So the, the average salary of state employees in 2019 there at the, at the college was 73,318. These are statistics that, that are published by the state. And the median salary was $60,000. And then it goes on to talk about how college students had to combine, in 2019, combined 417 billion dollar spending power nationally. So they're, they're a market segment that I think when businesses are looking to, to come to this area, that they're certainly considering, you know, that, that the school here and the students here have spending power that we might not see other places. It also provides some stability for us, as long as they're here.
Is there any available data for local, more localized data for that? I mean, that's great, but that really doesn't help.
No, it, the, the college marketing group is a national, national study. And as far as I know, there has not been a study locally of the spending power of the students here.
I would imagine it's pretty difficult and pretty expensive to get something done. This is kind of like we're in a test tube right now, since you had three months in spring without student spending power. What was the economic impact? But just curious, because otherwise, that, that number, to me, is meaningless.
I included it in there because it was included last time. If it's not seen as relevant, we can certainly remove it.
I think, I think maybe emphasizing why it's there might be, might be helpful that, you know, because you're, you're saying that it's such a, they're such a powerful economic force.
The local market relevance.
Yeah, yeah. Just, just maybe, I mean, it's nice to throw the number in. I mean, half of that 417 billion is Yale undergraduates spending, so.
Yes. There's no denominator there that makes it have a relative sense, but yes.
Their yachts and jets. But, but I think just to, just to say why it's relevant, why we're throwing it in there, yeah.
One more small thing is, particularly when comparing two. One more small thing is particularly when comparing two dates to sort of indicate that there's been a, there's, there's a trend. In that previous sentence, the median twenty-one, twenty-eleven salary versus the average twenty-nineteen salary, it should be either median in both or average in both, if we have both. Because otherwise, it could be, there could be no change, right? It could just be a matter of using the different.
Mean or median or, yeah.
And I'll double check those numbers to make sure that they're correct. Anything else for this page? I think tourism and lodging is definitely going to be a place where we're going to have to talk about the effects of COVID. I think that that will probably be most heavily impacted. So kind of go over the, the kind of high-level stuff regionally. It was hard for me to, I feel like this should be broken out as far as the regional and the, and the local. But to get the local data, we have to go hotel by hotel and look at their occupancy levels and things like that. And I think we've done that in another chapter. So we can certainly kind of reference that information. But the Williamsburg Tourism, I think Tourism Council or Tourism, yeah, Tourism Council provides that information kind of across the board. So you all know. In Hampton Roads, it, I found it interesting that there has been an increase in ser- in, in workers that are associated with accommodation and food services. Pretty significant, twenty thousand new jobs, I guess, since two thousand thirteen in that industry. And approximately thirty-five hundred of those are found in Williamsburg. And visitors to the Historic Triangle, we've added Great Wolf Lodge. I'm not sure why that wasn't included in the last plan. I'm pretty sure it was constructed in two thousand thirteen, it was just not included. I know that that's an attract, an attraction that brings folks in in the wintertime that you might not normally get just because folks are looking for something to do, and they don't have theme parks to travel to. And we'll.
I think it probably wasn't included because I think we have tended not to include York County parts as often as we include James City County parts. But, and so just seeing that if we are expanding to include the broader Lightfoot intersection area, that's a lot, that's York. So that needs to reflect other parts of this as well, not necessarily this chapter, but if we're going to think about that part of York, yeah.
Well, I think, I can, I can take it out, if that was the thing behind it.
No, I think being in there is fine, but you're like, you don't know why it wasn't there. And I think that, that's probably why, I think historically our mentality has not included York, Upper York as much as we've included Jamestown, I mean, James, James City County. But yeah, the Great Wolf Lodge, though, has always seemed like an enigma to me. It's like they capture people and then they're in there.
Is it, is it really considered a theme park? I mean, I, I always just thought of it as a hotel with a bunch of really cool.
It's, it's a Cootie Palace of water.
Not a category for that, though, in the, in the plan. But I, I was surprised, I was surprised to see it, because I didn't, I, I don't consider it, you know, with, with Busch Gardens and Water Country, which are theme parks as opposed to. But maybe, you know, I've never been there, so.
We're not the right demographic, I think.
Yeah, if you, if you say it's a theme park.
Well, I think, I think it's important to include because it is an overnight accommodation. And the chapter does talk about overnight accommodations in the Historic Triangle. And so York County is picking up room nights as a result of it being present in their account. It, it, it is an enigma. I can, I can, I have attended.
Have you been there?
Oh, yes. And it does, it, it was interesting because it was, it was, it, it does bring you in. It's kind of like a Disney World, where like, once you get in, you don't have to leave because they feed you and you sleep there and you play there and that's it, and that, that.
It is just like a little bubble, so, yeah, creating a lot of money for that one spot, but not necessarily.
It does, how, it, it doesn't bring anybody to, I don't, I'm not going to say it doesn't bring anybody to the city, but it does take a lot of people that, that are done with it. Their parents are like, I'm going to the outlets, so like mom just like leaves and, you know, goes and spends money elsewhere because they're tired of being with them. But I think that, I think that there's a, there is a revenue generator present there.
Okay.
You have a reference in that near the bottom of the left side paragraph, between twenty, two thousand three and twenty-ten. I don't know that that's really relevant.
No, those numbers have been updated, the dates have not, and I can update those.
I think this is a section where it's going to be especially important to provide a parallel.
An exact date associated with the figure.
An exact date, but then also parallel ones. So it's always, if you're looking at a pattern of growth, it's always from twenty-ten or twenty-eleven to twenty-nineteen, not sometimes two thousand three to twenty-fifteen, and sometimes two thousand and twelve to twenty-eighteen.
Okay.
Right? So that when you're comparing apples to apples.
And I also note, like, some of the stuff that was taken out on the, on the right side of that page talked about supply, room supply declined. I don't, didn't see that it had been updated with new numbers. I would have to imagine that that would be relevant. City is to the number of rooms compared, because I, I would, I would assume it's dropping.
Essentially on the next page.
What chapter we did room hotels in, was it Economic Development Chapter? Okay, we have those figures. And, and I think what might be easiest is to not necessarily repeat them here, but reference them and say that, you know, that hotel room supply and, and number of hotels, and number of accommodations can be found in Economic Development Chapter. Or if you'd like it to be just kind of copied from that chapter and placed in here, we could do that, too.
I would, I would certainly advocate it being here because I see it as, as sort of the, the quiet crisis of the region, frankly. And, and it's one that drives decision-making about land use, about, about Colonial Williamsburg. It's just, it's, it's almost existential, it seems to me. This, this, this really unsustainably low occupancy number. It's a sort of slow-moving emergency, it seems to me. So, and it's not going to get better as a consequence of the, of the current situation. So I, I would, I would vote for repeating it.
Yeah, I agree, because it's a low occupancy number based upon a lower supply number.
Well, the supply is too high.
Is that?
Well, I'm saying that the supply has dropped.
Sure, it's still.
And, and the occupancy has dropped, so the, the number of actual room usage is, is way down there.
Also.
Say that again?
Eleven percent.
Like today, as of right now? Yeah.
You're averaging ten to fifteen percent.
Yeah.
So, so the city's occupancy rate is so low, but there are a lot of new, newer hotels that are being built in York, obviously, you know, on bypass. There are a lot of new ones and people are out there. So a lot of the ones in, in the city are the older ones that are not as popular, or they're being. So I, I'm just wondering if we can, if we can state a reason, if there's a, a, a quantifiable reason that we can put here to explain why the occupancy rate is so low compared to the other, the other cities? And what that, if that trend is because of more building outside of, you know, in, in the general area? Or something like that, if, if.
We could certainly get an, an age for the existing hotels in the city. I mean, that's not hard for us to do. Oh, Carolyn says we already have it. I don't know, tracking down the, the age of, of hotels in York and, and James City might be a little bit more difficult, but it, it may also just be, you know, we can say that, you know, X number of hotels have been built in adjacent jurisdictions in the last ten years. And that'll kind of compare our existing hotel stock to the newer hotel stock in adjacent jurisdictions and.
Yeah, I, I think it's helpful as, as everybody said, it's such an important factor. It's like, okay, let's, let's try to figure out why. And if we have a, if we have a valid reason that, that we can support, let's put it in there.
I guess I, I thought that a lot of these lodging numbers were for our broader region relative to, say, Virginia Beach. That, you know, like the Marriott at Forts Colony is also doing relatively poorly. And the thing that's in McLeod's circle, that was a Hilton and then became a Doubletree. That, that's also, I mean, that was actually shuttered for a few months. I mean, it wasn't even at ten or twelve percent, it was just closed. So, I mean, I thought it was more broad, not, we have good numbers for what's actually in the city because we have occupancy licenses and all these other kinds of things we can keep track. But this issue on tourism and lodging and people staying here versus maybe coming for a day and going back to Virginia Beach, to me, that's a broader area issue.
Okay.
I think that's right. And I think we've seen both the number, and maybe it's not in, maybe I wasn't reading carefully enough to notice whether it was in this section or not. We have the raw numbers broken out by locality. It's possible we don't have the differentiated occupancy rates broken out by locality. That would be useful. My, my memory is that they're comparable. Maybe Williamsburg is the worst of three bad numbers. But.
Well, Doug Ponson's always, always had these Smith Travel Research datas when he was on the.
Yeah.
We can, I can certainly contact, the, the Williamsburg Tourism Council was really helpful as far as getting us the, the data that we have in here, the updated data. So I could certainly get back with them and see if they have, you know, some more refined numbers like that.
It'd be great, yeah. Just the more, you know, sort of clear and hard data that we have about this problem, I think that's a good way to characterize it, the better. Again, just so that we can make good decisions, when someone comes up and says, I've got another new use for a hotel that was built in nineteen eighty-four and has been at twelve percent occupancy for the last fifteen years. What do you guys think? We can say, yes, we understand this is part of a larger trend and this is why we support this. And I, I actually wonder, given that, this may be just too much effort for the payoff, but something that would be of interest, if it's easily found, is the number of rooms that have been converted in the last, whatever it's been, five or ten years since we've been seeing this. So the distillery, the, the housing, a couple of different kinds of housing, and then the demolitions. So Governor Zinn presumably will be the next one, but it was one or two on Richmond Road, right?
Yeah, we have, we have that data, so we can certainly.
Yeah, that'd be great.
We can include that. It might be easier to include it as a chart than to include it as, as text. But we'll, we'll figure out a way to convey that information in this section.
I think that'd be useful if it's relatively easily done. I wouldn't turn it into a research project, but.
No, we have, we have all the data. We can, we can just include it as a, as a chart, but kind of it'll reflect the number of rooms that have been converted, the number of rooms that have been. Okay, Carolyn says it's already in the chart, so we can just, we'll just insert it in the document.
That's great, thank you.
So we'll kind of roll that conversation onto the next page. This talks about room sales. For some reason, that chart on the left is harder to read than the chart on the right. And I'm not sure why it's coming up like that. I don't know if I need to adjust the font or the text. I don't know if it's easier to read on your iPads than it is in this printed version.
To color the print. Now, this would be the place to do what we were just talking about, is a graphic that showed, although I have to admit, I don't understand the difference between room nights and room sales, but room, room, oh, I see, it's, it's not, it's, room nights versus capacity in each locality would be a great single graphic that would capture all that information in a pretty nice way. And so you could, you could compare, you know, locality to the next, what the, what that ratio is, just visually. I think that would be really powerful, in fact.
Okay. Do you want to keep the room sales? I mean, that, that's the income, and that's why I think it's important to have those numbers. I just, I wish they could, they were more easily read. And I just have to go back and see why they're not coming up really clear.
Are we only counting the Upper York County area, or is this all of York County?
This is all of York County. These, these are the numbers that are reported to the Tourism Council, so it's, it's the all three jurisdictions.
And that, John's comment was exactly what I was thinking when I was looking at this. Like, York County seems disproportionately represented here because it's capturing stuff that's in Yorktown and Grafton and all those other areas, right? But, you know, hotels that are by Patrick Henry Mall and things like that that are actually part of, of York.
Yes.
Not sure you have access to better data than that.
I can, I can ask the Tourism Council if, if it's, if they're able to kind of break out the stuff that's a little bit more geographically relevant to us. I'll ask them and see if that's, if that's a possibility, or if they just, if they, if that's, their reporting is, is by jurisdiction and they, they don't have that ability.
Yeah, it's hard to think that anything past bypass road would have any relevance to our local area.
It, it may go back to, and Jeff just mentioned this, it may go back to the fact that you have folks that will come here for the day. So they'll come and visit CW, or they'll come and visit Jamestown, but they're not staying here. They're driving back down the peninsula and staying in Yorktown, or they're driving further and going to Virginia Beach or something like that.
I mean, once you get to Carter's Grove, Lee Hall, anything that's further down is just not relevant for like overnight stays, restaurant, you know, activity in restaurants, activity down Richmond Road, Merchant Square.
For the purposes of this, these graphs.
For this, for this graphic that we're looking at here, yeah, yeah.
Okay, I'll see what they can, if that's, if they can break that out. And if not, maybe we just need to define that that includes the entire county so that they'll see why that number is just disproportionately higher than Williamsburg and James City. So the next section we're going to talk about is income. And the data we have here, for consistency's sake, I'll note, is for, is from the two thousand seventeen American Community Survey. And this was, the, the data from the two thousand eighteen American Community Survey wasn't terrible to the previous data. So that was why we chose the two thousand seventeen data.
To me, it's a little confusing to talk about the recession.
Yeah.
What recession?
Okay.
Two thousand seven recession? Kind of over now.
And we're soft.
And.
Those were the good old days.
Yeah, and I think we mentioned it again, calling it the Great Recession.
Yes.
And we might want to rethink that, I think. Especially now, isn't for a real recession.
That was a real one.
That was a real one.
Yeah.
This one's worth.
This, just, yeah, this one's also real.
I think it's, it was interesting to note, if you look at the, the older data, as far as income goes, we've, we have seen a pretty good increase. The per capita income has, has gone up from twenty-three thousand, as we're reported in two thousand ten, to twenty-nine thousand two hundred and three. And that, that's, I'll note that that is per capita, that's not a household income figure or anything like that. But it's still.
Is per capita income a common metric? Because I'm used to seeing household income, but per capita is one that threw me off a little bit. And, and it's clearly used in here, so I suppose the answer is yes. But just as I'm going through this, the household income numbers are the ones that just mean more to me.
And I'll confess, I'm not an economist. I was going by what was used in the previous chapter in, in updating that information. I, I, I don't know the relevance for per capita as far as, you know, seeking grant information, grants and things like that. It may be more relevant that way, which is probably why it was included. But I can ask them why that, why that was reported that way. I'm not sure, I can't, I can't explain that.
Okay.
Was it interesting to note that even though we've seen that increase, we're still pretty, we're still significantly lower than, than the adjacent jurisdictions in, in both James City County and York, as well as the, the Hampton Roads metropolitan statistical area?
Yeah, I have to say, it's a little hard for me to believe that York, York households are that much wealthier than Williamsburg households. I mean, by a factor of, you know, seventy-five percent. So that, that makes me worry about the data a little bit, unless I'm just way off on the relative prosperity of.
I thought it was so incorrect, I went back and looked at it three times. Because I, I couldn't, I couldn't see how it was that significantly lower.
The students, right? I mean, isn't.
That's the, that's the only explanation I could come up with, is that the students, even if they are working, they're probably working, you know, food service or retail for, for minimum wage.
Sure, I, yeah, I get that. But even. Sure, I, yeah, I, I get that, but even comparing York to, to Jame City County, I just, um, and maybe this is my ignorance. Um, I, I hadn't thought that York was so wealthy that, you know, that those are like nor- Northern Virginia, um, household income numbers. So, um, that's of interest. I, I'd like to know more. And maybe it's correct, um, but I just, it was a flag to me personally. And as I say, it could simply be my ignorance. Makes me feel better that you went back and checked it three times.
I did, because I, I, I like trends, so when I'm looking at numbers, I, you know, I, I try to look for, you know, trends. And when I put that in, you know, I'm just kind of copying it off of the, the census data. And I got finished with it, and I looked at it, and I went, no, I couldn't have typed that right. I must have transposed a number somewhere. So I went back and checked it again, and it was right. And so I, I finished it, and I got the graphic put together, and when I was putting the graphic into the document, I went, I don't think so. That, that can't be right, but it is. It was, I was surprised. And I think that the students is, is probably, you know, you have a population that makes up half of the city's population. And you're, and not all of them are working.
Sure, no, of course.
You know, so you have that, and then you also have to take into account, because of the, the per capita income side of things, you have, you have families. So you have, you know, children that are not working, but you, you still have to count them in your per capita numbers, so.
And in fact, the Jame City County per capita income is ten percent higher than York, but Jame City County has smaller households, and so the household income is less.
It confused me.
Yeah, you definitely would have to dig down into, I mean, I don't know if, you know, the retirement, more retirement community up here than there, I don't know. I mean, it's really a number to dig into if you wanted.
Yeah. Yeah, I should, I guess I should go into the service. Median is, I don't know.
That's right.
Sure.
There's a lot of one and two-person households in Jame City County.
And, and maybe.
No, here too, yes.
Maybe that, the, so the last line in that, in that page where we, on the left-hand column, where it talks about households earning social security income, retirement income, and households that were on public assistance or SNAP, um, maybe we need to kind of dig a little bit deeper into that. And we can compare, you know, the households in the adjacent jurisdictions similarly. Presuming that you have folks that are on social security or retirement income, that's more of a fixed income, so they're probably not going to be making as much money anyways. And that might kind of accredit why our numbers are a little different. So we could compare where Williamsburg sits with those numbers as opposed to where Jame City County and York County sit. Just to kind of explain the, the household income differences a little bit better.
It, you know, a lot of it depends too on the purpose of what this document is, and if the purpose of this document is to, you know, reflect accurately, but also to, to put the best foot forward. If there was a way to exclude, I, I know not all eight thousand students live in the city, but probably a significant number do. You know, to exclude those numbers, because obviously it's a big skew. And if that's in fact the reason the number is so low, uh, that doesn't make us look attractive. If your per capita income is, per household, or per capita income is drastically lower than Jame City County or York County, and the household income is lower, um, you know, it's not an accurate fig.
But housing prices are higher.
Exactly, yeah, so it's just not an accurate figure.
Well, um, as long as we're kind of drilling down on this for a second, could we just go to the next page? Like, we're already on the next page.
I rolled over there.
What's the difference between median household income and median fam- family income? And, and maybe this is, maybe this is at the heart of the issue.
So household income is, is what's reported by the, by the household. Family income can be broken down into a family of two, a family of four, and then it goes on down five, six, seven, eight, or, I think then it's like eight or nine or more, or something like that.
So, so maybe this is the place, maybe this is where the answer is. So in table seven dash two, median, median household income for all of Williamsburg is fifty-six thousand dollars, which is the same number that's in the previous table. Median family income for Williamsburg is, again, s- significantly higher at eighty-eight thousand, four hundred and thirty-one dollars. So is that telling us that anyone who, any, any domestic unit that, that qualifies as a family is making eighty-eight thousand dollars a year as a median? And any domestic unit, and all domestic units across the city, whether it's a single person or five people living together. Uh, if they, if they consider themselves a household, the median there is fifty-six thousand, is that?
That's correct, yes.
Okay, so that maybe is where the, um, some of these differences start to play out. Uh, and, and for the purposes of being an informative snapshot of our local economy, um, I guess both of those numbers are right. It's just kind of hard to, to kind of get your mind around, because even a student who doesn't have a job might have spectacular purchasing power, because.
They have a credit card, they have to go someplace else.
Reportable income, but plenty of income.
Right, so, um, I, I guess maybe what I'm saying is I'm, I'm, I'm struggling with how to make sense of this information, but also struggling how to, struggling with how to make sense of it in such a way that would, that it would be useful and actionable for us down the road, and for people reading this document down the road. And I guess I just, I'm feeling like it needs a little more massaging for it to, for it to get there, because there are, some of these things just are confusing to even a, you know, reasonably literate, um, reader who knows the, the area well.
I, I think part of the answer maybe, and I, and I just made myself a note to include a map of the census tracts. It'll be easier to kind of identify, um, you know, where people live in association with their income. And so if I could, I'll, I'll add the census tract map that we used for the population chapter to this chapter as well. And that'll kind of, kind of help identify where folks are living and what their spending power is. You're going to have a different spending power kind of in the college campus area than you are going to have, you know, in, in other parts of the city. So that may help kind of answer that, that question a little bit.
I think it might just, um, maybe the last thing I'll say is it might also help to, to include somewhere in here a definition of these categories.
Certainly.
Of, of household versus family, and, and some acknowledgement, if not an explanation, some acknowledgement of, uh, the fact that these numbers, um, are, uh, I won't say confusing, may obscure, um, the underlying realities of, of Williamsburg's economy because of the presence of the students.
Okay.
And that's not to say that the students have a depressive effect on the economy, because I think the opposite is true. But they do tend to drag some of these numbers down, and, and the key ones are per capita and household income.
And we have the four hundred and nineteen billion dollar nationwide student financial impact.
Spending power, yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, um, to Jeff's point, we need to put a, you know, a fairly fine point on that, and specifically say, you know, that, that the lower numbers are, are somewhat offset by the fact that the student spending power is not from income necessarily being earned.
Income that's being made and reported here.
Yeah, 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 it's not being reported here.
Yeah, and, but I think that, and going in between the two pages and trying to get these descriptions of what the different census tracts, where they are and stuff like that. While I think we need to have these caveats that, you know, the census tract three seven oh one with a family income of a hundred and twenty-seven thousand obviously is including lots of the upper end housing tracts and things like that. The thirty-seven oh three is including a lot of what is downtown of Carter, William and Mary, but the thirty-seven oh two need to be mindful that there's, you know, unemployment and poverty and homelessness and all those other kinds of things. And so not trying to undercut these, um, statistics to say these are under-reported across all areas because people have credit cards that they're spending as students, but, you know, this, because there's real needs in some of these pockets.
Absolutely.
So you, you have a heavy job, or, to just separate that out.
I'll do my best.
We don't want to look, we don't want to look worse than we are, but we need to acknowledge where we have needs and, you know, represent that.
Absolutely, and I thi- I think it's, to kind of go back to the, the conversation we've had about the census, I think it's, it, and it's not surprising to point out that, you know, the areas that we have lower incomes reported are also the areas that we have lower response rates to the census. You know, so, so getting those figures accurately reported is, is also important.
And, and so maybe the graph that's in the other chapter repeated here or something like that might solve this, because anyone who's in town looking at this would recognize these different neighborhood sections and what they really do actually represent, yeah.
Yeah, no, I, I, I will include that, that census tract map, just so that there's some, a reference point for everybody to see. So that, the next graphic on that page is just the household income, um, by percentage of total household. So you can kind of see, you know, that, that we have a, a fairly large percentage of household income reporting less than ten thousand dollars. And we have, um, kind of a, a drop-off there, and then I guess what you would consider, you know, moderate income makes up a good base, and then we have some higher incomes on the, on the far end of that scale. I think it's, it's important that that graphic kind of get highlighted, because it shows that there are some discrepancies, um, in income across the board. And that can, can be reflected in, in housing and, and other areas of, of this plan.
What does that, what does that tell us about affordable housing, when you have that high of a percentage of, of, of people maybe, looking maybe at the fifty thousand and down? I mean, that's a pretty significant number, pretty significant percentage of people who are living here on less than fifty thousand dollars a year.
And it's not just, it's, it's a household, so you, you could have, you could have a, a family of four that's living on, you know, less than fifty thousand dollars a year. So I, I think I'll go back and make sure that we're defining household uniformly across all of those, um, statistics.
Yeah, less than ten.
Yeah, and, and.
That could be fifty percent students too.
That could also be students.
I, I.
It, it looks disproportionate because of, of, of the potential for that to be students. You know, they're not, they may not be working at all, or they're not reporting income here, they're reporting income where they're living.
Well, I think somebody, there are other ways to, to capture this kind of data, and there are things like, um, proportion of free and reduced lunches. And, and I don't know if that's broken down by census tract, because that's probably something that's broken down by, you know, school district. But that's another good, um, indicator of, uh, a, a household being cost burdened in various ways.
I know that the school reports that, um, school-wide, I'm not sure if they report that city versus county, but I can look and see if they do.
Yeah, it'd be worth finding out, yeah.
But just eyeballing the numbers, I mean, forty-four percent of the households in the city are at fifty thousand and less.
Yeah.
And just that, that whole big suite.
So that's about eight thousand people, basically, right? Seven or eight thousand people, somewhere in that range.
I had some eyebrow raising when I was looking at these numbers, when I was looking at them, and I'm going, I can't believe this. You know, it was surprising to me, you know, when you, when you break it down like that, you, you say, you know, forty percent of the city is, is living at, you know, less than fifty thousand dollars a year is something that, I don't know if a lot of people understand that, you know, what that looks like as far as housing. I know that when we talked about the housing chapter, and we talked about, you know, a third of your income should be dedicated to housing, you know, what that, what that means in actuality. You know, that means your, your rent or your mortgage and your power bill and your, you know, your heat and all of that kind of stuff is, is a, it's a significant cost burden. So if we finish talking about income, I think we are, um, we'll roll into the sales and retail sales section. And I will, I will confess that this is far out of my, my, my scope of comfort. Um, so these numbers, I, I worked with, um, her name was Catherine, with HR, um, HR PDC, and, and she helped me kind of figure these numbers out. There's a benchmarking study that they do, um, that talks about retail sales both regionally, and then you can kind of break it down, um, individually. And, um, retail sales in the Hampton Roads area rose twenty-eight percent. Um, and that, um, is, is a recovery of, um, a decline from twelve point six percent during the recession. And I guess we need to define the recession. I don't know how we want to do that. We wanted to identify it by the year that it occurred, or.
I would simply say, just to.
Recession in two thousand eight, or.
Say exactly when. Is that two thousand seven to two thousand eight? Is that just a single year, right? Exa- what, just what is the?
But I think the res- the, the actual recession started then. I don't know if anybody can define the time.
Well, this twelve point six comes from someplace.
Yes.
So where does it come from?
Okay.
And just say that.
Yeah.
You don't have to say anything about Great Recession, you can just say from these years.
Okay. Our retail sales grew slower, um, and Jame City County and York County, um, grew at eleven point eight percent. Uh, I think part of that can probably be ju- just attributed to, to the development that's taking place in Jame City County for sure, um, and the outlets and things like that. You know, that's a, a big driver for, for retail sales. Um, and I suspect we'll see those numbers shift a little bit more with the, with the retail sa- or retail outlet that's open in Norfolk. Um, you know, that used to be, Williamsburg was a driver, people were coming here to shop at the outlets, um, and they were spending time here in the city as a result of that. But now.
Something that gets lost in here, but I think maybe should be highlighted, is that Williamsburg had the most improvement among the three localities. That while all three lagged behind Hampton Roads, um, Williamsburg had the best, saw the best improvement in this period, right? Unless I'm misreading something.
We did, yes, no, we did.
And that seems to be, uh, I won't say an inverse, that's different from what it was before. And, and, and probably ought to be, I don't know, but celebrated, but, but highlighted.
Can definitely do that. We'll call that out a little bit more clearly.
And, and that's just, um, gross revenue, right? That's just a number of how much money people have spent. That's not about, it doesn't, this isn't tax revenue.
No, we'll get to that next.
Oh, right, right.
So the numbers in these two graphics are reported from the Walton Cooper, Walton Cooper Center, um, and, and they go back. You can go back, I think, to nineteen seventy. Um, I didn't go back that far, just for space sake, um, but you can see, um. Sorry.
What's, what's the benefit of going back that far, when we're not really going back that far in anything else, that I remember, nineteen eighty?
Yeah, it, it was, it was what was available, and I, and I, I thought that if we had the data available, we should be, you know, incorporating it. We don't have to, um, certainly, it, it was, it has changed significantly since then, I would say.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just asking what, you know, for, for planning purposes, why would we need to know what the, you know, from nineteen eighty to nineteen ninety it changed? And, you know, I, I'm just asking, I don't, because I don't see, I don't see how it's relevant to go back that far for that.
I do, I think it was.
That's fine.
What year was the last annexation the city did? Was nineteen eighty-four? So that, there was an annexation the city did in nineteen eighty-four that included portions of Richmond Road, I think, so that might be a reason. But it's not necessary if, if the commission doesn't want to do that.
Yeah, two thousand seems like a pretty good, that's not so far back in the mists of time. I mean, that's the era in which this area has really developed as a retirement, um, area.
Okay.
I think, you know, we, there's, there is a break in there somewhere in the nineteen nineties or the early two thousands, where this region took on a new character, but a different kind of character with more, greater density. Um, and that seems to me to be far enough back. Um, I, I don't object to having the other data, because it's interesting to me, just as a, I guess, a, a historian. But for the purposes of this document, it may. But for the purposes of this document, it may not be helpful. But I think what would be helpful is to track this against population. In other words, to, to what degree are these numbers a reflection of a robust retail environment? And to what degree are these numbers just a question of numbers? How many people are actually there going to the grocery store and buying cars? And, you know, televisions and everything else?
There certainly was a lot of sales, were sales in Gloucester County in 1990, 4.3 to 45%.
Yeah, some, some, I think that's a decimal point. That's a decimal point issue. But, you know, Pecosin, Pecosin barely registers, right? But also Pecosin, what's the total population of Pecosin? I, I think, you know, you'd, you'd have a sense for, um, or maybe it could just be done on a per capita basis, retail sales per capita.
That figure is available.
In Table 74. That, that, that might be a way to do it. I, I don't know. I don't know what the wa- the right way to represent it is, but it does seem to me that-
Report per acreage.
Well, that's another factor too, sure. Yeah, that's right. Newport News is enormous. That's a county, essentially. So we'd expect that to be quite a bit larger than these other ones. We'd expect the share, both as a share, as a percentage, both in, in, in terms of the, the raw numbers. So maybe just some refinement of these tables to make them a little easier to make sense of.
And go, cut off at, at 2000? Is that what, what I heard, was that?
I'd be content going back that far.
For the purposes of this document, 2000 is far enough back.
Yeah. And I think that's about as far back as most of the other data in this section goes. Maybe there's some from the 2003 or something, but...
I think there, there's a couple of graphics at the very end that go, go back even further, but they're part of a, a, part of a plan from HR PDC that looks forward to 2040, so.
Oh, right. It's very much a long term. Yeah, that's right.
We'll kind of roll taxable sales. And that 2011 date should be 2017. This is all newer information, and I'm not sure why it's not showing in red. That whole section was a Baird update, and I know it's been updated. So, um, I think it, it was interesting to note that the, the food and service and drink, food services and drinking places, which I found an interesting definition, makes up a large portion of our taxable sales in the city. And then they somehow break out food and beverage stores separately. So I, I, from what I understand is that food service and drinking places are restaurant, and then food and beverage stores are retail operations. And, and that's why they're kind of split out like that. And I'm not sure how they handle places, you know, that, that you can purchase pre-made or prepackaged food inside. I don't know how they break those things out, but that was my best understanding of, of those numbers. Accommodation is much less of a source of taxable sales in Williamsburg than, than our neighbors. But both James City County, New York County food beverage stores and, and food service and drinking places are major, major sources of taxable sales. James City County's clothing and clothing accessory stores, which I think we can accommodate, or we can accredit to the, to the outlets. Um, and York County, their, their largest source is general merchandise stores, so you're, you're talking about your big box retailers and things like that. We haven't seen the growth in retail sales that James City County and York County have seen, but given our size, we're, we're still relatively, you know, strong in that area. And then we talked about per capita taxable sales at 23,935, which ranks seventh among Virginia cities and counties. I think that, that there was a, um, it's, it's not a bad standing for a city of our size as, as far as our taxable sales go.
Yeah, to me, that's the first sentence, not the last.
That's pretty impressive, and that's why I think that the per capita factor would be really helpful in that, in those tables. I think, you know, let's, let's get to number one.
Let's, let's have everyone come visit and pay taxes to us so that we then have low taxes.
Only taxable cells. We're only going to enter into taxable cells.
Yeah, that's right.
So this next section is the fiscal capacity section, and it's based on a report from Virginia cities and counties. It's most recently published in 2017, and talks about revenue the locality would generate from local and resident tax base if we're taxed at statewide averages. For Williamsburg, I don't know why that 2000, something must have changed all of the 2017s to 2010s, because that keeps happening. Williamsburg had a per capita revenue capacity of, of $2,167.23, and that ranked, uh, we dropped significantly, 88th out of all Virginia localities. We originally, we were 25th in 2013, and I, I cannot figure out how that happened or what caused that drop. I'm not sure if, if other places have just grown so much that we've, you know, that our, our ranking dropped because of population growth, or, or if our ranking dropped because of just a, a different, different economy that folks are looking at.
I, I struggled with this concept, and, and, and it struck me as something a, 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 a kind of only a bureaucrat would sort of dream up. And I love bureaucrats, don't get me wrong. But, but the basic idea, just, I wonder if you could explain it to me, or I'll explain what my understanding is, then you can help me get, get right.
I'll give you my understanding.
Well, okay, but, so, so is it, they're basically saying if, if everybody, if everybody had the same local real estate tax rate, this is how much money we could be getting out of that population? That's what this is intended to do?
Yes.
So why would you, like, what, what value does that have for planning purposes, I guess is what maybe the question is? Why are we looking at this number? What does this help us do? How does this help us make decisions?
I can't answer that. I think the, the thought process behind it, when it was included in the 2013 plan, was that if, if you were, if you're trying to compare apples to apples, if you're trying to look at, you know, what, what our taxability is versus another localities in the state, you know, this is where we kind of sit.
So from a resident perspective, I want to be as low as possible, right?
I think so, yes.
Because that means we have a low real estate tax rate, I think. So I just, I don't know, maybe somebody else can sort of explain why this is something we really need in here. I just, I'm not seeing, I'm not seeing how this informs the larger comprehensive plan, or how it even informs this chapter.
I like it, I'm sorry.
And, and, and maybe the, maybe the headline is simply, our real estate tax rate is this, this is the state average, this is how much generate, this is how much revenue is generated from real estate taxes in this community. Much of our tax revenue is generated instead from sales tax, thanks to the heavy, you know, tourism, infrastructure, whatever. Some nicer sentence than that. I just, I struggle with this.
I certainly think that's a neater way of defining this.
Okay.
Yeah, because, I mean, the idea that we're, went from 25th to 88, but we only changed our capacity by $25.
Yes.
And the numbers that we're at, 2167, relative to the average of 2105, and this other average of 2191, I mean, the differences are matters of taking two people to lunch. So I definitely, and, and I think that when I think of Williamsburg City, I mean, we have very low property taxes. And relative to when I'm like with my Richmond friends or something like that, or up in Deltaville, where I kept a boat for 25 years. You know, I mean, people are like, you know, it's, they, they think I've misquoted what our taxes are because they're so low. And I'm like, no, because we have all these tourists and they pay taxes when they spend money and things like that. So somehow this is not representing, I think of, and I think it's Jeff's point, it's, I guess it's factually correct that you got the numbers from this wonderful organization or whatever, but they're not representing a story that's really telling us something. And the fact that we have a really strong bond rating, and we have low prop- you know, low property taxes and all that, you know, the fiscal capacity for this city is large or solid in some fashion, that if we had really hard times, we could, you know, the city council, the city staff, you know, could work together, say, if we actually needed to do a bond issue for, we, we would have that capacity. And, and this is telling a whole different story.
Okay. We can, we can certainly-
And, and, and saying the words like bond issues, I mean, when the world was normal six months ago, I mean, we were talking about potentially developing a sports center and maybe, you know, having bonds issued, you know, with the broader arena and, you know, the broader community. And we had the ability to even think about those kinds of things, or Andy, Andy Trivin did.
I, I think it would be good to know why this is an important number from the people who put the number out.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
You know, and I see, you know, and a lot of what, I mean, we do this with our own documents, you know, we, we start with an old document and we just update it. There really isn't any need to put that ranking in there, because as you pointed out, you know, we're above average for the cities, above average for, we exceeded the, the capacity for all Hampton Roads. So the average for Hampton Roads was 2091, so we exceeded that. If the purpose of the revenue capacity is to show the type of retailers or whoever who might come into your area, that could be good info, whether it belongs in this plan or not, I don't know the answer to that question. Plus, we're also stuck with this adjusted gross income, which if we're using students again, it's an artificial number. So I don't know what the basis for the number is either. So I agree with what you said, but it could be something that I, I would like to know why, what the purpose of that number, why they report on it. Must be important, somebody did a report.
I think the last sentence, the last sentence in that paragraph, I think, is, is a significant statement, and it echoes a lot of other parts of the, of the plan. I wasn't sure how all of that, because I didn't understand any of that either. But how, how it got to that statement, I mean, I, I think that statement-
Yeah.
Talks about, you know, it's, it's certainly, that's certainly, we all agree with that statement.
And again, like, that's, you know, bottom line upfront, like, that's the important takeaway line. So maybe instead of being the last sentence, it needs to be the first sentence.
And, and maybe with a different term than fiscal capacity. And, and, yeah, I guess just to amplify what everybody's saying, the, the, Williamsburg ranked 88th out of all Virginia localities, but that means it had a high fiscal capacity, not a low fiscal capacity, right?
Yes.
Or, or-
No, you're, you're, you're saying it right. It looks like it would be converse, but you're saying it correctly.
Yeah, so either just it needs to be explained in a way that would add 15 pages to this chapter, or I think just maybe rephrased in a way that we all kind of can get our heads around.
I bet it could be phrased much more succinctly.
That last sentence is probably the key thing. And capacity also makes it sound like there's an opportunity that we're missing somehow, like if we just, if we could just make the most of our capacity, we'd, we'd really be killing it. And I don't think that's what's intended here. It's just something about this concept. I'm going to run along to Wikipedia. I mean, when I read it earlier, I was like, that's bananas.
I, I tried to bring it up here. I, I saved in a separate file all of the data that was used to assemble this chapter, and so I can provide that report if you want to see it.
No, no, please. I'm, I'm hopeful that Wikipedia will have some-
It's pages long.
Graduate student has usefully provided an explanation of fiscal capacity that I can get my head around.
This definite, this definition of revenue capacity seems like an invitation to our, our fearless city leaders to raise those taxes.
Well, that's just what I'm getting at. I, I, there's a concept underlying, there's some purpose for this that I don't yet see. And I think if I understood what the purpose was, then I might be able to make sense of this data more, but without that, I think just something that-
I think the last, the last sentence really sums up the purpose of including this, but I think, like you guys have said, I think that there's a, a more succinct way to kind of summarize that.
Okay.
Yeah. And for me, all these comparisons that are literally less than lunch, um, don't, doesn't make a lot of sense.
Yeah.
The last portion of this chapter is just historic trends and future projections, and, and this is looking at the, the triangle as a, as a region, and, and looking forward, um, the last portion of this is looking forward. But I think, again, there's lots of 2010s in here that should be 2017s. I'm sorry about that. I'm not sure why they're like that.
I guess I would have kind of the same comment, or similar comment from the prior section. I don't know the, the benefit of comparing our, our share next to larger localities, because it's, should be lower. It should continue to decrease because we've got a finite area. I think the focus should be on what we're adding and what our numbers are and what we expect, as opposed to how they compare to the absolute numbers of larger localities, even though they're in the same general geographic area. That goes for the charts too.
And, and we have done that with some other chapters.
I'm a newbie.
No, I agree, I agree.
But you've been watching closely on television, all of our, all of our prior work sessions.
I've got it on DVR.
No, but I mean, in, in some of the chapters where we're always going to be looking like we're underperforming, but just because of our size, just looking at what we're doing is more than relevant.
Yeah, we're going to add 10,000 new jobs, but it's in a sentence that makes it look bad. A loss of employment share is projected to occur even as the city will add 10,000 new jobs. Well, that's a lot of jobs. That's a positive.
Well, yeah, that's, yeah. So this is a point, maybe it's, maybe it's population, related to population somehow?
Probably, yeah. Well, I mean, they're bigger areas, so if-
I just mean maybe the, its representation in the document should be related to population. Not that that's causal, but that's clearly a, a major factor.
And I, again, I think in this section, it'll be extremely important, again, to point out the, the unknown effects of the current economic situation, because those projections that were done here were done, you know, I think it was in 2017 or 2018. But those projections could look drastically different, you know, going forward.
Yeah. Related to this population question, I, I don't think I indicated this in the, the version that I sent along, but the last sentence here, by 2040, Williamsburg is projected to have less than 9% of the historic triangle's population, down from nearly 10% in 2010. That just doesn't sound like a huge enough distant, just difference to maybe construct a sentence around it. So I wonder if that sentence just could stop at less than 9% of the historic triangle's population period, and then the rest of the information is sort of captured in the graphs, you know? Because I read that a few times, and I said, no, that's really, what is that, a percent? Less than a percent? That's not a huge difference.
And it's not, I doubt it's that where our population is declining, it's just that the growth in our population is smaller than the growth of these other populations, and so, you know.
Yeah. Although the, the employment graph is pretty interesting, because it shows in absolute terms that employment in, in the city has in fact declined, both in percentage terms and in real terms. I, I think that is a sort of headliner table figure, and that, and that, I won't say that's alarming, that is noteworthy. It can't entirely be attributed to population growth, right?
Correct.
No. And, and it's just, you know, it was up to 25,000 approximately, down to 15,000. Some of it is decreases in population at the, at the foundation. Another part is the, um, the hospital moving out of town. Another part is Newtown and businesses that were downtown moving to Newtown. Another part is Newtown and businesses that were downtown moving to Newtown.
I'm not saying we can't, I didn't find the causes, but it is
No, 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 I mean, some, but, but, you know, ten thousand on a basis of twenty-five thousand is, is huge.
Right.
Yes.
Forty percent of the jobs have left the city in the past twenty years, fifteen years. Makes it even more remarkable that we have this great fiscal capacity.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's hard to fit, make the pieces fit together, isn't it?
Potential.
Okay, um, thank you, Erin. There's a lot to go through, but I, I really appreciate it, especially because when we do these first drafts, that's the heavy lift. So lots of rewrites and, and re-looking at data, but that's, this is the big one on that. So, Carolyn, with our ten minutes that remain, um, you know, I, I read through this a couple of times. I scanned through it and looking for, you know, red updates and it's all perfectly blue. So it's like, everything has just been, the changes from last
What I did is I took out all the changes we did last time. Got a couple of little updates from Yeah. It's basically what we talked about last time. I updated the chart on the last page to the charging station.
Yep. Yeah, yep.
All the pictures. So basically, this is
Yeah, I mean, and
Unless we had more comments on this chapter.
Just one tiny, tiny one, which is that graphic, that map on thirteen one. The William and Mary President's House being singled out, um, that is
I thought we took that off.
Yeah, we thought we took it off, but it is there.
It's there.
I know we took it off.
Yeah, it, it just, you know, one of these kids is not like the other.
But it's a Tesla.
Right.
But, yeah, we took that off.
Okay.
Okay.
Good catch. I mean, and, and for me, it's just that I, I skimmed through it a couple of times and then read sections. I'm like, this all looks like really good, so. I mean, you're certainly welcome to walk us through this, but I think that we're all just, we're
I was going to say, I don't have much to add other than a couple of comments I got and I've made those.
Yeah, so I, I mean, for, for those people who were thinking that maybe there'd be a longer discussion here and haven't gone through it, please read through it and send them forward to Carol. Because to me, it just looked like one or two or three comment, I don't know what it is here, but I think the pulling out of the infrastructure, we're all good for that and that this is capturing the comments of our previous discussion for me.
Happy with it.
Okay. That's our regular fourth. Yep. Okay, so, um, we drove everyone away, so, um,
They hung in there for a while.
Before we were encountering an open forum, so I don't need to do that. Is there any other
They left before, they left before fiscal capacity.
Maybe they could have explained it.
I've been waiting for this.
Other comments are real good, are exhausted or some combination of the two. Okay, cool. So we're good? So we are adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.